Winston is a leading contender for the Heisman Trophy, the most prestigious award in college football. Cases of measles are surging this year to nearly three times the annual average. The Centers for Disease Control reported today there have been 175 cases in 2013. More than half involved people who were never vaccinated and were infected overseas. China today barred banks and other financial institutions from handling Bitcoin. The computer-generated currency has been widely traded in China, but the central bank issued a statement saying it has no legal status. The agency said the ban will prevent money laundering and promote financial stability. Private individuals are still allowed to trade in Bitcoin at their own risk. On Wall Street today, the Dow Jones Industrial Average lost 68 points to close at 15,821. The Nasdaq fell nearly five points to close at 4033.
Again, the main story of this day, South Africa's first black president Nelson Mandela died at his home in Johannesburg at the age of 95. He had been ill for many months. This evening, the current South African president Jacob Zuma announced Mandela's death and said, "We have lost our greatest son." Other reaction also poured in. Former President George H.W. Bush praised Mandela's tremendous moral courage, and former President Jimmy Carter said he gave new hope to generations of oppressed people everywhere.
On the NewsHour online right now, you can watch President Obama's remembrance from the White House, plus more from Charlene Hunter-Galt, more reaction from around the world, and interviews from our archive with Nelson Mandela. And a reminder that PBS's special coverage continues with Frontline's documentary, The Long Walk of Nelson Mandela, an intimate portrait of one of the 20th century's greatest leaders. All that and more is on our website, newshour.pbs.org.
And that's the NewsHour for tonight. I'm Judy Woodruff.
And I'm Gwen Ifill. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with more on the life and death of Nelson Mandela, including reflections from Mark Shields and David Brooks. For all of us here at the PBS NewsHour, thank you and good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by United Healthcare, online at UHC.com, BNOSF Railway.
I'm Gail Ortiz. I'll be leading tonight's meeting in the absence of our chairperson, Mick Ruth. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and it's being recorded to be replayed 12 noon on the Saturday following the meeting on Community Television of Santa Cruz, Charter Channel 71, and Comcast Channels 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. Please sign your name at the podium when you come up to speak if you so choose. We would appreciate that. So, roll call, please.
Commissioner Welsh.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Acting Chair Ortiz.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is time for oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Chair.
Commissioners? None? Okay. This is the time for public comment, and if you're here tonight to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda, this is the time for you to come up and speak to us. Okay, I don't see anyone. We'll move on with the agenda then. Are there any commissioner comments tonight? None? A staff?
No staff comments.
We're just going to run right through this meeting. So we have approval of the minutes of the Thursday, November 7 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
Move the minutes.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're all treating me too well tonight. This is the time for the consent calendar, and these items on the consent calendar are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted in one motion in the form listed on the agenda. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the planning commission votes on the actions unless members of the public or the planning commission request specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order they are listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to pull one of these items? Anyone in the audience that would like to pull one? All right then.
I'd like to make a comment on one, but not pull it. I just have a question. One of the applicants tonight is, or one of the consent items tonight, is a renewal of a two-year permit. How many renewals can they get under our ordinance?
Up to six years by state code for the subdivision.
And you're saying the state preamps our...
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the, is it for the single-family home or the subdivision?
Yes, it's the one on Sir Francis.
I believe there's no limit to extending their permit as long as the rules have not changed.
And I just have one question and one comment. On the same, Sir Francis, is it, would it be, would you be able to add the boilerplate comments or the conditions that you have added to our new applicants that come through? So it looks to me like, and I actually was going to compliment you on, you've added some new conditions that really make it more consistent for those who are applicant, kind of takes away a lot of questions in that process. Would it be okay to add that without pulling it? I mean, I understand that's from 2006 and we're just forwarding it on, but...
My understanding is that if the applicant agrees to us making a modification to the conditions, then we can add those.
And I think that, I would assume the conditions were still standing there. You just appears added them for consistency and to take away some questions in the future.
Yeah. Commissioner Welsh, I think many of those conditions are things that the applicant's going to have to comply with whether they're stated or not, and it really was an effort to provide clarity. So one thing we could do is provide the applicant with some of those conditions so they understand what they're going to be expected to complete when they come to the counter.
I like the consistency, and I think that's great that we've got those added on there. The other, I kind of had a question about the El Salto. So I understand that they're in the VS R1 residential, and in the new general plan, it still stays with a VS overlay, but is a zoning change?
The zoning wouldn't change, so they'd still have the visitor-serving zone, the land use designation, and I'm not sure if this is one of the affected parcels, but some of those in that vicinity would change, but still retain a visitor-serving overlay to allow them visitor-serving type uses.
Okay. Now, it'd be my only comment is that we're consistent with our future general plan, that we, other than that, that's our comments I had on there.
Any other comments on the consent calendar? Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent calendar carries. We'll move on to public hearings, and our first public hearing tonight is application 12-080, and it's 2178 41st Avenue. Staff report, please.
Excuse me. Let me just say that it's a modification to design permit and a conditional use permit to incorporate a car wash into the recent approved commercial retail building, 7-Eleven, in the community commercial zoning district. Staff report, please.
Thank you. And I'd like to take one moment to just clarify to some members of the public that if your items were on the consent agenda, the consent agenda was adopted, so they've been approved, and you no longer have to stay for the meeting. Good luck. I just noticed some of my applicants still...
You know, I think that's a really good thing for us to do here on principle, I think, because people do end up sitting for quite a while and not needing...
Yeah, I just, I noticed a couple...
You want to spend your time here? It's up to you, but...
So we're now on 5A within the agenda. Okay. Before you is a modification to the design permit and conditional use permit for 2178 41st Avenue. It's currently a retail commercial building. There's a gas station in front that's combined with the property. And here's a photo of the property from 41st Avenue. It's the Coast Gas Station. And this is a photo around the back of the property connecting towards Pizza My Heart and the auto drive. Back on December 6 of 2012, the planning commission approved a design permit and conditional use permit to modify the existing building into an upgrade for a new 7-Eleven on site. During the review by the planning commission, there were concerns for the impacts of the business activity due to deliveries, lighting, and construction, and the impacts on adjacent neighbors along the east side, on the east, on Derby Avenue. Additional conditions were placed on the conditional use permit to mitigate their concerns. One was that deliveries shall be limited to the front of the building, and the hours for deliveries were between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. Second, a six-foot-high concrete block wall was proposed in the project, and the planning commission required that this be completed prior to the framing of the building. So, again, just, we understood your concern for the adjacent properties behind the location. In March of this year, a new design came in incorporating a car wash on the side of the building. So in front of you is the elevations that are proposed for the 7-Eleven and car wash, and there's a front and rear elevation. This is the property under an aerial. The white line there is where the current fence is, so this is current, this is what it looks like today on an aerial. And between the white line and the red line to the right is the property line. So that area that you see behind the fence is owned by this property owner, and I just wanted you to see this before the new, this is the new site plan, and this is how, the site plan that was approved previously minus the car wash. The buildings actually moved back toward, closer to that fence line, and then the circulation goes behind that building, which is, brings the circulation closer to the neighboring residential. So in green is the proposed car wash. Access to the car wash goes along the, behind the building, so it would actually go through that area. I kept the line there showing you where the fence is, so it would go behind that fence. The fence will be taken down and improved, but the circulation will go behind the new building into the car wash. So this is an aerial showing the building in relation to the neighboring, the adjacent residential. There are two homes within 100 feet of the proposed entrance to the car wash. In the design of the car wash, staff felt that the design felt fit nicely with the building, the overall design, but concerns due to the previous concerns of planning commission during the previous review on the residential, and then knowing the inherent impacts of a car wash with noise, and not only of the equipment. Staff asked for, at the time of submittal, for a noise study to be done here. The applicant has been willing to work with us on sound mitigation. They, after the first design, they came back with Ryco bi-fold car wash doors, a Provest wind shear, dryer silencers, and then they recommended limiting their hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The ongoing concerns still exist. Within our general plan, it states that we should ensure that land uses and the noise environment are compatible. Also, within a conditional use permit, the planning commission must give due regard to the nature and condition of adjacent uses and structures. The noise study took into consideration the car wash itself, but not really the queuing of cars behind that building and the all other sounds that come from a car wash and impacts. So with that, staff has continued concerns, so staff has recommended that the planning commission deny the proposed modifications within application 13041 for the car wash. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Okay. If there are no questions, then we'll open this up to the public. Would the applicant or their representative like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rosalind Rondash. I am the representative with the consulting firm that's handling the project.
If you wouldn't mind signing in, we would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
So thank you for hearing our project tonight. I understand that we're not here with a recommendation for approval, and that's a challenge for us. So thank you for hearing us tonight, and thank you to staff for doing what they could to get us on this agenda. I feel that staff has really hit the main points of this project, so I'm just going to go into a few key facts and areas that we want to look at. First would be the timeline. Second would be, where do we go from here? And third, that, just to express that, we really want to work with you to get your support. That's our main focus. And as Katie has indicated, that we've been willing to work with them through this process. And all the indicators to us through the process, the project's been in for 10 months, has been the noise associated with the dryer, with the equipment. We were never asked to provide queuing information or queuing noise readings. That was asked of us two days before the staff report was published, and that's why we were adverse to going with a third-party review. It wasn't, in the staff report, it indicates that we were objecting to this due to time and financial concerns, but it was really that it's been a moving target. They say they need us to look further into a specific area, so we do that. Then it's not good enough, they need us to look into a different area, so we do that. And so we're a little bit frustrated right now. And we just want to come to you and say, "This is our project. We're willing to work with you. We're willing to try to address any concerns you have, but we need to be clear on what we're working with and go back and get you what you need to get a favorable recommendation." So with that, I just want to touch on a couple of things. The noise, the second noise study that we provided dealt with the revised bi-fold doors and the silencer package. And we, in several meetings, had come to the understanding that the noise concern was that if we made the project, not create any additional noise to those rear property owners, that we could get a favorable recommendation. So we worked within the project to address design, to address mechanical selection. We were even able to revise a need for a taller wall to keep it down at the six foot rather than going taller by changing up our equipment. And we were really caught off guard when we came back with that, and then was told, "No, actually, we're concerned about queuing noise, too." And I can see that queuing needs to be looked at, but at the ninth inning, it's a little frustrating for us. So we're here tonight to say, "We want to work with you. We want to make this project happen. The business owner needs the car wash to make it pencil out in dollar and cents, but we need to know what your concerns are so we can go and get you solutions." Now, based on that conversation that we then went back to the table with staff and said, "Why aren't we getting your support, you know, two days before the staff report is being published? What can we do?" And we were told that if we did a third-party review, that we still would not get their support. So to us, it made no sense to go to a third-party review. We have professional, prepared reports that say that we're not increasing the noise. We can go look at queuing, and since then, I've had the consultant look at the queuing. We are not increasing the noise at the rear property line, even with queuing. So it made no sense to agree to a third-party. And I just wanted to clarify that the staff report says that we declined based on time and finances. Just wanted to clarify that it was more conversation and back and forth and frustration is why we declined that. Secondly, I just wanted to speak to the queuing. A fast-food restaurant is going to generate a lot of queuing. A car wash is estimated to generate one car in the bay, maybe one car in queue. Now, like I said before, we had the noise consultant look at queuing noise. They went with seven cars, and we still do not generate any noise impact above what it currently exists. Because we've got the sound rail, because of the way the dryer is orientated towards the front of the building, not towards the back, all of these things, we still do not create a noise impact for those rear property owners. So with that in mind, when you purchase the car wash, your ticket is good for two days. If you see someone in the line, you personally think about it. Are you going to wait? I might have five minutes, I can wait. But if there's three cars, if there's four cars, I'm going to come back later. That's just human nature. We don't anticipate having seven cars, but our noise analyst looked at seven cars, and we still meet that noise restriction that was conveyed to us of not increasing any noise impact back there. Typical car wash runs about four minutes. It's a three-minute wash, 60 seconds to 90 seconds for the drying cycle. So again, if there's one or two cars in the queue, you're going to come back. You're not going to sit there and wait. You've got better things to do. I do have my noise consultant here. If there's any specific questions on noise, they are here to answer those. Other than that, I am here to answer any questions you might have, but we're really here just to get a clear directive of what you want us to fix so that we can come back and get approval.
Thank you. Questions of the representative?
Yes. You mentioned that if there's two or three cars in the queue waiting to, for a car wash, that they're not going to wait and they're going to go on. How are they going to accomplish this on the site plan?
Katie, could you put up the site plan? There's area just to the outside that they could then go around.
This, I'm looking at something that was prepared for 7-Eleven, it's colored here, and it is quite different than what's being showed up on the board. From the car wash, while it doesn't give any dimensions, it appears that your entrance is on the, to the car wash is on the south side of the building, and you're suggesting that they're going to exit if there's too many cars in the queue by somehow going around the car in front of them and exit on the north side of the car wash. On this particular drawing, that north side is about one-half of your entrance side, and I'm just wondering how you get a car through there. It's not like it shows there. I'm going from what you prepared for us. I have, I have no way without somebody marking the site out there to address this, but it, on what you prepared for us, there's no way it's possible, but what you're showing up there, it's possible. And that's all I'm asking. Why the difference?
My understanding is that there is enough room if... Joe, do you want to speak specifically to dimension?
Or do we have two sets of plans, or what have we got here?
Let me look. Let me, I don't... My name is Joe, we're with ASI Consulting, and I was signed, I was here about a year ago for the building, and I recognize, thank you for taking our hearing. Let me look at the dimension. That should be pass-through, but let me look. From the back, and these are my print, from the back of the building as the car lined up or queue up, I see about 40 feet, so that's enough pass-through if there's a car waiting. Someone behind that car waiting wants to get out of line can easily just, if you will, you know, use the access area for pass-through.
My fellow commissioner kind of helped me a little bit here. What they showed on this drawing that I have, this one here, is they showed a roof shadow, and that's what the difference is here. And I apologize for that, but when you look at this, there's no way a car could pass through there.
So this is staying at 37?
I have one other concern was, and this is for staff. Was Zone 5 addressed on this issue? There's a Zone 5 facility under the proposed site between the houses to the east and the building in its original location when they appeared before us a year ago or more. What it is, is it's a... What it is, is it's a concrete covert underground controlled by Zone 5. It empties into the retention ditch at the corner of 38th and Bromer.
Okay, it was not addressed within this application?
Because Zone 5 looks at putting permanent stuff over the top of it and would obviously have some comments if anything were to occur in that area. I, the only reason I know about it, I used to be the chairperson of Zone 5.
Okay. You done?
I am done.
You're done. Other commissioners?
Well, I do have some concern, and while I understand that what you're saying is current ambient noise is already at a level that's at what your car wash is going to emit, and that's including if you have both the bifold doors and the windshield silencers, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you're saying that it's right, 49.7 is a predicted noise, and so it's right at our borderline. And taking that into account, my concern, and I do recognize that your hours go till 7:00 PM is the recommended hours, or you're talking about the 10:00 PM. When we look at the, our new general plan, one of the main concerns that was brought out is noise. And so, along with that is both the noise that happens, and I have to defer to the plan to do these hours because I'm not a noise expert, but the day-night noise level, which increases in the evening, and also the community noise equivalent level, which both increases as the evening goes down and the ambient noise reduces during the daytime, it makes that noise of the car wash down even more. So, I do have some concern, just because being at that border, it is a concern. And while we don't have control over the day-to-day ambient noise currently, we do have control over where we go in the future with this, and I just think we have to take that into account.
Are there any questions of the applicant before I ask? Thank you, thank you very much for your presentation. Is there, are there any other comments by the applicant or applicant's representatives? All right, then. Is there anyone else who is here tonight to speak about this application? Please step forward now. You're welcome to speak. And if you feel comfortable doing so, please sign in.
All right. My name is Ameriko Castillo, and I own the house that's directly be, behind the gas station, so I'm the property 2217. And my concern is that there's already a lot of car washes on 41st Avenue. There's one at Shell. There's the car wash that's just like, pretty much next door to the gas station, two doors down or something like that. There's another one all the way down at the end of 41st by the Safeway. I don't think the neighborhood needs another car wash. And once you build that car wash, it's kind of like putting concrete over dirt. It's pretty much destroys that permanently. You can't go back. And we will be the ones that end up dealing with all the noise, whether, you know, I've been through a car wash, and sometimes I blast my stereo real loud, and I don't consider the person, you know, people around me, so you can do as many studies as you want. Ultimately, it's going to be left up to whoever it comes through that car wash and, you know, whatever noise they make. And us, as the residents, are the ones that are going to have to deal with it. My kids play in the backyard, basically right next to that, would be right at the back of that, where the cars are passing by, you know? It's, I don't know if I'm explaining myself very correct, very well, but basically that green little piece of land, that's my kids' backyard. They play right there. So, all these cars will be passing by and making noise, and they're going to be hearing it. They're going to be like, there's all this whatever, cars and blasting music and whatnot coming through there. I think it's just unnecessary. I understand that you need to make a profit, but not at the expense of my, my family and my kids and my house. I don't, I'm not going to support that. So, I would really appreciate if you guys deny the, this car wash on the behalf of my family, because we're going to be dealing with it. Everybody here, with due respect, you'll go home to your house, and you'll be in a quiet neighborhood, I'm sure, and you'll be fine, and we'll be right there, and we'll be dealing with it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who's here tonight to talk about this?
Hello, my name's Tom Harmon. I live at 2221 Derby. I'm the house with the blue tarp. I want to address the noise study. They took a snapshot of the noise at, what it was, June 7th at 3:00 in the afternoon for 20 minutes, and that was their basis for the ambient noise. It's not going to be the same, let's say, January 7th at 3:00 in the afternoon or 3:00 in the morning. It's, it's, 20 minutes is not enough. And I really don't think that they drove from Redwood City, took 20 minutes of whatever, and then drove back. They're, they're probably there all day long. I'd like to see the raw data, because they probably took the noisiest part of the day and then used that as their basis. That's what, I'm assuming that. But anyway, yeah, I'd like for you to deny it also, because the, the equipment that they're using, they're, like you said, they're, they're right on the edge there. As the equipment gets older, it's going to wear out. The doors won't hold the noise as well. The silencers won't kill the noise as much, and the noise level of the car wash as it gets older will rise. And the, oh yeah, the drainage, you had mentioned about the drainage. Originally, that, that was supposed to be, I believe, crushed granite or something, or crushed rock, to leave it accessible, so they can access that drainage. And that was brought up when you guys approved the original. So, I don't know if we have a copy of the original, whatever, the, the original.
Application.
Application, thank you. But that's, I believe we had it in there where it was crushed granite, or I don't know what it was that they were going to put down there, but some sort of rock. Now, they're going to asphalt over it. It was supposed to be discouraging cars. I think they're going to, I forget what else they're going to do, but, but now there's, instead of discouraging cars, they're, they're going to asphalt over it, and they're going to be running, running back and forth. The 3:00 in the morning, when a truck driver stops and leaves his engine idling to grab a cup of coffee, he's going to be that much closer to our house. I don't think the study took that into consideration, and...
Can you explain that to me? How, what they're proposing right now, he'll be closer to your house?
Yes, the, the original building, they're turning that down and moving it.
Oh, but they're not changing that with this application?
Yes.
They are changing, no, no.
No, no, the original conditional use permit allowed the movement of, the building footprint, I believe, is right in this area here. And Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong. And then, within that original application, it was allowed to move back. It's just the change in this application is simply the car wash. Joe, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, Mr. Harding, what you're saying is, with this, with the previous application, it's going, it could intensify the noise for your family just by having, moving the building back? Maybe that's what you're mentioning?
Well, that also, but that was with the original. I thought they, I thought they had moved it back on this one, so.
Okay, great.
I was wrong on that one.
Thanks.
Okay, I think I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Nikki Harmon. I live at 2221 Derby Avenue. Noise is a concern. My concern is that every time those doors open, how much noise is coming out? So, maybe quieter with those doors closed, but as soon as that car comes in and those doors open, what are we hearing? And also, the Zone 5, I believe that in the original application, there, that was not going to be asphalt back there. I believe it was going to be something that allowed percolation or allowed soil to be able to.
Drainage.
Yes. And I have concerns about just the numbers that are in the report. They seem inconsistent. I'm not sure if I'm reading it correctly or not, but they refer to the closest house being like 73 feet away, and then at one point, they say 56 feet away. So, there's inconsistency in the report, in that noise report. And I also talk about having a CMU wall there in the report, and it's not there yet. So, it makes me wonder if there was even anybody there, because they're talking about having a CMU wall that they couldn't get past to get to the residential area, but there's no CMU wall there. Most of my concerns have already been spoken. A lot of them, what you guys have said in your report, what you recommend, noise, and what my neighbor is, his concerns. It's mostly noise and just, you know, do we need another car wash? We don't? We've got, we've got water problems right now in our county. I think we should consider that. I'd also like to address the setback. When I look at the diagrams that are in the packet, it looks like there's two different numbers for the setback from the, where the green space is behind our house and to the, to the new CMU wall. It looks like it's hard to read the numbers on that, on the, online, whenever you look at those, because they get distorted. One looks like it's 40 feet, and one looks like it's 10 feet. So, like I said, there seems to be a lot of inconsistencies. So, I really would like to know what we're looking at as far as the setback from the CMU wallet they're proposing and then the green space area.
Maybe staff can answer that for you tonight.
And then, again, just increased activity. Increased activity back there is going to make noise. You can't control people, as Ameriko has said. You can't control the volume of their voices. You can't control the volume of their radio, spinning their wheels, you know, anything back there. You just, you have no control over that. And in the original application, you, you guys did address that, and we really appreciate that, that there'd be no deliveries in the back, that there was this limited timeframe of deliveries, and that kind of seems to be going away. Everything you said yes to in the original application, you're now saying, well, you're not saying yes yet, but this is what they're proposing, is just, never mind what you said before, we're just going to have people driving back there from 7:00 to 10:00 PM or 24 hours a day. So, that's a huge concern. You know, our quality of life is going to be reduced immensely, you know, because of this noise. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak to address some of the concern quickly?
Yes. We generally don't like to do a back-and-forth, but if you have, but if you have facts that, you know, such as feet that she's talking about, and that kind of thing, that would help the discussion.
Thank you. As stated, my name is Joe Nguyen. Just very briefly on the previous speaker, that's a 10-feet landscape setback, which is the, the proposed 10-feet landscaping from the back property line. The CMU wall, which is proposed as part of this scope work for the new building, is within this property line. So, that's from that going toward the front, toward 41st, is a first of 10-feet landscape planter. That asphalt from that planter onto the back of the building, the proposed building. Someone mentioned Zone 5. I, I did all my due diligence, and I went through Public Works, and I received all clearance, and I can check my notes, but they would talk about impervious space, surfaces versus what's there now or proposed. I went through all of that with Public Works already, so I think we rehashing a lot of, this thing's bringing up a lot of uncertainty, and these issues have been addressed from the, from the initial public hearing for the new building. And I think, the last point I want to make is the, the car wash. We went through this, and I have tried everything that I, I have from a technology out there that's available, and that's mitigating this car wash noise in the tunnel at, at the source. And that's namely, the, the door at the entrance of the tunnel and the exit of the tunnel. I just want to emphasize that the logistic of this is when a car comes in to get washed, both door closes and the wash cycle begins. When the dryer kicks on, both doors still remain closes, closed, and when the dryer stop, the door, both door opens, the car exit, and the next car, which is in the back, comes in, and, and the cycle repeats. So, there's a lot of talk about noise, but you have to look at what we are trying to do here. We, I'm putting everything that I know possibly to mitigate this, to make this project work, and that's putting both doors in where, and closes, when all the equipment stops, then the doors open for the next car to come in. So, what else can I do from, from that, the design standpoint? So, I just want to emphasize that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, then we'll close the public hearing, and are there any questions of staff that anybody has regarding? I have one question, but are there any other questions that got brought up during the public part of this? My, I'm just curious, is it SoCal Creek Water District, or is it the Santa Cruz Water District?
Santa Cruz.
It's Santa Cruz? Is that something that had to go through them in order to, before this application came before us, or, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if that's something they, did anyone contact them? Did anyone talk to them about any restrictions or moratoriums or anything like that regarding this kind of use?
In terms of water usage?
Yes.
We did not. I think, you know, typically, car washes recycle the water that's used for the wash, and it filters it and reuses it. So, I don't know that there would be a huge water demand of the use despite the, you know, the inherent idea that, you know, it uses a lot of water, but by recycling, I think they reduce it.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll, public hearing is closed. Comments from commissioners? Who wants to start? Don't jump in.
I'll jump in and start. First of all, I, I hear the applicant's frustration over having to do multiple studies and getting, you know, multiple questions. But I also recognize that staff is, is doing their best to really help applicants bring forward things that meet all of the requirements, and we've got a reasonably new staff, and I know it's not a, it's not an excuse, it's just a fact, that they do a lot of work in the review and in the processing of applications, and they learn as they go as well. So, I, I hear the frustration, and, and I can understand how that could be a problem, but at the same time, it's their job to make sure that they bring the best they can forward to the plan. I did go back and review when this application was originally submitted, and there was a lot of discussion about the neighborhood and the noise and traffic and, and the intensification, the possibility for intensification at that point. And at that time, there was no car wash involved, and it's a little concerning to me that if we need the car wash now to pencil out the numbers, why didn't we have it back then when we, you know, did the original approval? We've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years in our general plan process, and one of the principles that Capitola really is, is proud of and adheres to and believes is very important is the fact that where we have neighborhood residential adjacent to a commercial area, that we do everything in our power to mitigate the adverse impacts on the neighborhood side in the development of the commercial. And I think the community has reinforced that over the last couple of years, so it's something that the five of us sitting up here really need to take into consideration when we're reviewing applications like this. And the noise study, I had a concern with the noise study in that there's a large portion of it that's based on estimations. And it surprised me, because the technology of doing the double-ended doors is not that new. I've been through several, and I travel a lot by car in the United States, and I've been through several, several of those types of car washes where the doors, you drive in, the doors close on both ends, you complete your entire process, the doors open, you go out, somebody comes in, the doors close. So, it surprised me that they didn't have actual data in the report that we were looking at on how that actually works. at on how that actually works. So the estimations are close to the line, and that sort of gives me enough of a concern that I, I'm, I'm not sure I could support the application tonight.
Commissioners? Any other comments?
Well, I can make some if you'd like.
No, I don't. It's up to you.
Okay. I was here when the application came for the 7-Eleven. All due diligence was done by this commission to assure that the building was sighted properly on the site, not pushed too far back towards the residential neighborhood. There were two conditions, nineteen and whatever the other one was, relative to protecting that neighborhood. I feel the same way as I did then, that this is not a good use to put cars back there next to the neighbors. And the hours operation from seven to seven seem excessive to me even in the application because I'm making these comments because the applicant asked for feedback on how they can make this work. I can't see this car wash working in this location. I think the approved 7-Eleven was a proper use in the zone. It protected the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I don't see this as a welcome addition to the Forty-First Avenue area.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
Okay. My, my comments are that over the many years that I've sat on the planning commission and the council, I've become increasingly sensitive to incremental applications. I don't know another way to, to say this, but I find that there, that some people work in a way where they get things approved incrementally over a number of years, and that, they feel that's the best way to get everything that they want. They think that if they come in with everything all at, at once, it might be a little bit too much. And so they come in with one thing and then they come in with another, and I'm not saying that's happening here. I don't know anything about this application, but that's what it feels like to me, and I'm very sensitive to that. I, I'm, I'm not in favor of that approach. I think it, it doesn't serve our community. I'm not in favor of this application as well. My recollection of our last hearing on this was that even cars driving in back, not queuing, not stopping, just driving through in, in normal operations was not something that any of us or the neighbors wanted. And I see this application, the inevitability that there will be more cars driving back there. So I'm not in favor of it as well. So that being said, I, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to deny the application before us.
Second.
All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your attendance tonight. Our last item on the public, the public hearings is number zero-six dash zero-six-one, nine oh four, Sir Francis, request for a one-year extension to previously approved coastal development permit. Am I wrong? Oh, sorry, sorry, I am, I am, I am, I'm sorry. I almost had the whole meeting right. This one is thirteen dash one-six-zero at one fifteen San Jose, conditional use permit for outdoor seating and an outdoor ATM in the Central Village zoning district. Staff report, please.
Okay. Thank you. This is a review of one fifteen San Jose Avenue. We had a, a code enforcement call regarding an ATM at this location that was placed out in the plaza. So in response to the ATM, when I went down to view the site, I also noticed that there's quasi-public outdoor seating that was introduced about two weeks prior to the ATM. So we're bringing both of those to you tonight because they require a conditional use permit in the CV, Central Village zoning district. I have a series of photos for you just to show you the layout and how this property is set up. This is the mercantile and the plaza in front of the mercantile. You can see the ATM to the right, and then there's multiple tables with chairs along the area. This is a view of the four tables and chairs. They're movable, they can be rearranged, as well as the green ATM to the right. There's no issue here in terms of the chairs and pedestrian circulation. There's plenty of room for such chairs in this area. With quasi-public seating, there's no requirement for additional parking, which was, it's, these chairs are available to anyone that's visiting the mercantile, and the owner has also stated that if someone were walking by with their coffee and wanted to sit on the chairs, it's not, there'll be no signs that say only for mercantile use. So in terms of the use, we feel that it complements the existing area. It gives people a place to slow down and sit and take in the area and enjoy it. With the ATM, there's concern for the bright color. I did have multiple calls on this one due to the bright, the brightness of the color and the location outdoors. So if you were to approve the ATM tonight, we would suggest the two conditions shown on the screen. First, the ATM shall be painted to match the mercantile. No reflective lettering or paint is allowed. And then also, the ATM shall be oriented so access from, so it is accessed from within the plaza and does not obstruct pedestrian flow within the sidewalk, because if it was facing out towards the sidewalk, we'd worry about pedestrian flow along the sidewalk. But this is, as is cited today, it faces into the area. We just want to make sure it's not changed in the future. Staff is recommending the approval of the quasi-public seating area and ATM within the private plaza as conditioned.
Thank you. Questions for staff? My question, do we still have the two ATMs that I meant to go down and check and I didn't? The one that was in the old Chamber of Commerce kiosk? There's still an ATM there?
No.
There is not on, right, adjacent to this?
My understanding is this is replacing that ATM.
That, okay. And then on the other side of the mercantile, is that ATM still there?
I, I'm sure that one is even there.
That one's not there either. The one by the taffy, the one by the taffy place? Okay, that got moved out too. Great, thank you. All right. So no other questions for staff? We'll open it up. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant, are their representative here? And if you would like to speak, this is a good time.
Hi, my name's Shane Gomes. I'm the new onsite manager for the mercantile. As I was saying, it was, it's basically just for more people to come in, sit if they need to, and, you know, enjoy the village life, basically, and enjoy the, the nice aspect that we have there. Brings in business for everyone. The ATM is a very hideous color, I know, and we've said that from the beginning, but we are changing it to the mercantile colors already. As you see on one of the pictures, the top is already in process of a nice mute yellow with the burgundy colors to the lettering, and it is in the process. So other than that, it's a great add-on, and we do have another one inside the mercantile, just the ATM itself on the taffy side, inside, not on the out, but they thought this would be a great way to bring in some more business as well, to, just to replace the other one. So that's, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, before you leave, you alluded and stole my thunder. I've been in the mercantile many times and I do know you have an ATM inside. And is the addition of this ATM outside because you're selling space outside? I mean, the need for two ATMs on one property seems redundant to me, and this one is ugly. I agree with you. I don't think burgundy and whatever you're going to do is going to help it at all. I think it's oversized. I think it poses a problem at night unless it's well-lighted and the rest of it, because people don't feel secure, as secure, let's put it that way, as using an ATM inside a building as opposed to outside a building. And I'm concerned about it, and that's the part I'm concerned about. The outside seating is wonderful, and I know that you don't enforce it. I have trouble with my knees and I sometimes stop there and eat an ice cream and stuff, so my, my weight will tell you that. Having said that, who, what was the big desire or push to this second ATM?
So our owner, Peter Dwarz.
Peter Dwarz, I'll see. You've said enough, I'm sorry.
He likes that.
You answered my question.
He likes the aspect of having more attention drawn to his business, of course, you know? So he desired another ATM on the outside. This ATM structure that it's in is built for security purposes of the ATM itself. The, the top does light up, and we do have security lights around the mercantile, so you know, so it's pretty bright. And I just got the three lights that you see on top of the mercantile, just brand-new, so they are really bright. And I don't think there has been many issues or should be any issues at all for security purposes. The village is very safe to me. I live right next door, right there.
You spent a summer, the evenings in the summertime?
I have.
And you, okay.
I still say it's fine, it's safe, and I enjoy it. I don't think it's very much of an arousal.
I absolutely agree with you. I go down there in the summertime a lot at night.
Yeah.
And I've never felt insecure in Capitola.
At two in the morning?
Never.
Not at two in the morning.
When the bars close, which is when I think they would have trouble.
You gotta remember, all the patrons from the bar walk by my house and your house.
They do. They walk by mine too.
They do. Yeah. Any other comments?
I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here tonight? I don't think there is, because I know the other two people in the audience, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Let me just make a comment, and that is that I was solicited recently to put an ATM in my business, and they make a ton of money, a ton of money. It's kind of crazy how much money they make. You know, we decided, we didn't have room for it and didn't want that look in our business, but I understand why anybody would want an ATM. And I do think that we need to maybe address this in the village, possibly either in our new ordinances or in the general plan, because this is a really good money-making operation, and we might see a proliferation of them in the future, because there are people out there leasing them out and, and trying to get those leases, and so people are going to be tempted. Anybody else want to talk about this? I'm sure there's somebody who wants to talk about this.
Well, I personally am going to get shot, I can tell, but I think that the, the seating is exactly what we want in the village. It's a gathering place, it's a place for people to come together and sit and have coffee or ice cream or whatever they want to, want to do, and I, I really like that addition to that area. I've been down in the village a lot and everybody's looking for an ATM, and I know there are a couple of businesses that have them indoors. The one that was in the kiosk was well-used, well-located, really handy for a lot of people, and this is so close that it, it seems really appropriate to me. I don't like the green either, but if they make it, you know, look nicer. And I don't believe that we got any comments from the police chief that said it would really be a hazard or that they would be overly concerned, so I, I can definitely support this application.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issues with it. I, I think those ATM machines, while they may make money, they're also a valuable asset to our community, so a lot of visitors coming in, always looking for cash, so.
I agree. Ron, any, any other comments?
I made my comments.
Okay. Well, you know, I support the seating a lot. I, I'm really happy to see it there. I have a problem with outdoor ATMs. I think that they should be in, inside of a building or against a building and be less obtrusive. I, I don't think it's the look we want in this village. I think it's, they're tacky. They're useful, yes, but they're really tacky. And if we see this one, can we say no to the next three people before we can get an ordinance together, and how many do we need in this community? I am surprised to hear that both of those other ones went away, but this is not what I want to see replacing it. I would rather see them in a wall, and I would support that at, at the mercantile. If it were put into a wall, I just feel it has a better look, and I think your courtyard would have a better look as well. I think it would be, you know, a much more graceful, enticing area with that, that kind of commercial box sitting there. My question to you is, is, is the side where the green is, would that be, is that ATM, that large ATM going to still be there, or, or just the ATM that's on the top now? Are you going to paint it all out solid?
They have not finished it completely.
Could you, I'm sorry, can you come up to the, my, no, no, it's, you know, my fault, sorry.
So they have technically not finished it yet, and their proposal for it was to just get rid of the decals except for the top ones, but Peter, of course, likes the way that it looks of how it says, because it's big, bold letters, so, I mean, it's going to be a darker color. It's not going to be that outstanding green and white that it is now, but I think they might keep it the way that the letters are.
The big ATM on there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So if this app feels like it's going to pass, I would, I would like...
I don't think it is. I think it's hung up on two to two if I'm reading everybody right.
All right, then, I won't make that proposal. Would someone like to?
I absolutely agree with you. The ATM machine that was a part of the kiosk for the Chamber of Commerce worked well. It was in a wall of the building. This is standing out standalone. Your suggestion with regards to an ordinance, especially with the general plan rework and then the ordinance comes after it, to look at ATM placements is a very good idea. I like your idea that if it were incorporated in part of the building, as part of the seating area, or wherever they want to place it in the building, I can support that. I think the standalone is ugly, and I don't care what color they paint it, it shouldn't be out there standalone.
Thank you for that support. Would someone like to make a motion? I'll make the motion. Can the chairperson make the motion?
Well, I just, if you make the motion the wrong way, it passes the other way. I want to be careful what you're...
You make the mistake.
The obvious motion would be to approve it, and then it would go down to a two-to-two vote if I'm reading everybody right, and that would be in denial.
I'm going to ask staff, I would like to approve the seating portion of it and deny the application for the ATM portion of it, and that would be my motion.
We could certainly do that.
I'll second that.
And that, that sounds right to you, okay.
Could, could I ask just a procedural question? If, if we deny it and they, they have to come back with a whole new proposal, right? Would there be a way that we could offer a approval on a condition that they come back with a different design?
We could deny it without prejudice, and, and they could come back if they take Gail's suggestion of putting it on a wall or something like that, but it doesn't take a denial to come back or, or an approval to come back.
Alternatively, you could condition it as such. You could approve it with the condition they incorporate it into the building, for instance, sir.
Although I would like to see it come back so that we see it, you know, it would need to come back, and I'm happy to do that. And that, I don't want to have them, you know, have to put out any more money for this, you know, and have it be the shortest period of time for them. I don't want to make it hard on them. They're a good merchant in town. So I would make the motion that we approve the application of the seating. We deny without prejudice the application of an exterior standalone ATM, but would entertain another, an extension of this application or a reissue, I don't know.
Continuance?
A continuance with a redesign for an, against, built into the building on either side of that building would be fine, I think, with any of us.
Well, I think, just, when you say either end, you're talking the San Jose Street or this end?
I say any side they feel like they want to put it on. It's fine with me.
I would give a preference to this end, just because there's, there's one inside on the other end, and I think most of the activity winds up being on this end, so I, I would prefer to keep it on this end of the building as opposed to either end, but that would just be a friendly.
Yeah, that's fine, either way, fine. So that's my motion.
I'm not sure I want to second that. The reason I thought your motion was clean, and I seconded in the first place, your first motion, was that they have the opportunity to bring back the ATM under the first motion. This here is suggesting that just because we want to see where they place it, they get to bring it back with no additional cost. That's, that's true if we just do it without prejudice, you know, type of thing, and, and just make the motion... motion clean, that we just don't want the ATM standalone.
A standalone ATM. Is that true?
That's the only reason. I'm having a little trouble.
So, we collected a deposit for this application to be reviewed by staff, so staff's hourly fee is applied towards this. So, additional work that would be done by staff would be billed towards their deposit.
So, it really wouldn't make any difference if we...
No, they would, the difference in cost would be the initial development fee, you know, the portion of the fee for submitting the application would no longer, would apply, so they would have a little bit of additional cost to resubmit.
What about maybe continuing? Can staff recommend the best way for us to go about this, costing them the least amount of money and letting them decide if they would like to come back and put something on a wall?
I have...
Let me get staff...
Can I also just, we've got a motion and a second, and then we've got a second motion here, just for clarification within...
And I didn't second it.
Within the, yeah, you seconded the first one, and then we kind of went on to a second motion. So, if, just for the record, if we could kind of clarify which motion we're working on, that would be helpful.
There is no second motion without a second.
I'll take that, both of my motions. I'll rescind both of my motions, and now we can move forward. So, does staff have a...
I think if the applicant desires to move forward with some kind of modified design, we could take it in with just, you know, a couple of hours, a few hours' worth of staff time to bring it back to the commission. It's not a complicated project. I think we could write a half-page staff report and come and talk to you about it.
So, how do we deny, what's the terminology for the denial of that portion of that?
I don't know if it would really matter, to be honest. I think whether you continued it or denied it without prejudice, either way, if they come back, we'll serve in good faith and help get them there in the cheap.
The only message that I would like to see delivered to them is that we would encourage them to consider putting an ATM on this end of the building in an appropriate design.
Well, I think that's said then.
I do think we should consider a time limitation, though. If you would not approve the ATM that's there, we should think about if we continue it to the next meeting so that it's addressed sooner rather than later, because now it's a code violation.
Well, I don't, all right, so I don't want it continued so that that stays here. If my motion carries, I don't want that to stay here. So, it would, you know, I would want to state it in such a way that that wouldn't happen regardless of whether, you know. So, I would say we are denying that with, without prejudice. I think that's probably the way we could do that, because then we'll have a denial tonight. And they know we want to, we want...
First of all, I hate, was it Rosenberg's Rules of Order? Nobody asked me to redraw my second on the first motion, and I can understand why staff's confused, because I'm getting more confused. I think we know what we want. We need a clear motion to do what we want. The motion should be, if you'd like to make it...
No, I think you should...
Well, I'll try to make it. I move that we deny the application relative to the freestanding ATM machine with a suggestion that we would look favorably or quite favorably at a ATM machine that is incorporated into the side of the building, and that we unanimously approve the idea of the outdoor seating, quasi-public outdoor seating.
I second that motion.
Okay. Let's get to a vote before we change.
I understand it, so we've been...
Any other comments? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I think the motion just carried.
I'm writing down.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for putting up with government as a resemble sausage, so.
A resemble sausage. It was so much easier on Robert Drew's order.
That's why they don't put me in this seat very often.
No, you did great.
So, thank you. That concludes our business for tonight. We have a director's report?
Just briefly to update you on the general plan update, we are intending to release it for public review on Thursday, December 19th, and we're going to extend the statutory 45-day public review period to 60 days to allow folks roughly six weeks after the holidays to review the document. So, you should be seeing that here in the next couple of weeks.
How do we request hard copies, paper copies of the new report?
We'll give you hard copies.
But how does somebody from the public that wants a copy, how do they go about it?
They can contact me. I would say they're expensive. They're about $50 a copy, so we're going to be very limited on how many we give freely to the public. We can certainly reproduce at cost, but to the extent possible, we're going to encourage people to use the digital versions.
I, when he gets through with his staff report, I do have a commission question.
Okay.
Are we ready for...
That concludes my comments.
I'm sorry. It's the same subject. It's the general plan. I submitted my comments, and I met with you prior to the meeting that we had jointly with the council. Did anybody, after I submitted them to you, pick up that the city boundaries on 38th are incorrect?
That's something that we're looking at. You're talking about the mobile home park?
Yes, it's the old Castle Mobile Home Park. They've moved it over onto D Street, and we don't own any of it, and it's not annexed to the city. And it's a perfect configuration of what we've always had. Somehow, it just got drawn a street over to the west, and so I just want to make sure that...
It's on our punch list of things to clean up before we...
Because I didn't make a notation on that page, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else? All right then, we will adjourn to the meeting of, our next meeting is January 16th?
January 16th.
Good work, everyone. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Gail. Good job.